KJZ FM and HD1 Long Beach, this is KJAS 88.1, a service of California State University, Long Beach.
You're just too marvelous, too marvelous for words, like glorious, glamorous, and little standby amorous. It's all too wonderful, I'll never find the words that say enough, tell enough, I mean, they just aren't swell enough. You're much, too much, and just too very, very, to ever be in Webster's dictionary, and so I'm borrowing.
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council meeting for April 27th. Thank you all for coming. Tonight, we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask Ryan Lowe, the Eagle Scout that we're going to be giving an award to, well, giving recognition to tonight, to come forward to the mic and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, Ryan.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Deaton, here. Mayor Protem Sloan, here. Councilmember Miller, here. Councilmember Masalavet, here. Councilmember Vera Papa, here. Approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Do we have anything that needs to be rearranged? No changes tonight?
Madam Mayor, if it suits the council, I would request to move my city attorney report to immediately following presentations and before oral communications.
Okay, that'll be fine. All right, anything else? Yes.
Yeah, I'd like the, I'd like to record to reflect on voting no on item G.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Council, it would be appropriate to do that before consent calendar. You can note that before the consent calendar is voted on.
Okay.
Okay, then the rest of the agenda, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So move.
Okay, that's 5-0 to accept the agenda as presented. We are going to move on now to the presentations and recognitions. We will begin with the WAVE Awards, and this is the Seal Beach Cable Foundation, SBTV3, and our very own Robin Fortlinkey. Welcome, Robin.
Thank you, Mayor Deaton. Good evening, and welcome, Mayor Deaton, distinguished council members, and the City Manager. I'm Robin Fortlinkey, and I'm the station manager at SBTV3. In attendance with me tonight are many of our public access producers, and some of our board members are Chairman Mr. Peter Aninos, Board Member Mr. Joseph Valentinelli, and you can see some of our producers here. We have a couple people out of town, so, but we're excited to be here. Tonight, we are going to acknowledge the programs produced at SBTV3 that have been recognized by the Western States Region of the Alliance for Community Media. These recognitions are called the WAVE Awards, an acronym for Western Access Video Excellence. The Western Region is one of six chapters of the national organization, and include the states of Arizona, California, Colorado, Hawaii, Nevada, and New Mexico. We have been fortunate in that programs produced at our facility, whether produced by the foundation or by the volunteer public access producers, have placed as finalists or winners for more than 27 years. The 2014 WAVE Conference and Awards Program was held late last year in Ventura. I was able to attend the conference, and we were notified that of more than 350 programs submitted, we had three finalists and one winner from SBTV3. Producing a program is a lot of hard work and a team effort, and all of these fine producers that are here tonight are part of that volunteer team. They are very dedicated individuals who created 130 new public access programs in 2014. The volunteer hours donated by them is 2,563 hours. That's a lot of hours, thank you. Throughout the years, the collective efforts of the public access producers have resulted in many WAVE Award recognitions, and we are very proud of their accomplishments. Tonight, we have an opportunity to share the recognition of some of our programming with several of our community partners. At this time, I would like to ask Rosie Ritchie to come forward. She here? There you are. Come on this way. How do you know exactly where those cameras are? Thank you. Rosie Ritchie is the Director of the Seal Beach Organization, who during 2013 and 2014 school year embarked on a zero tolerance to bullying mission. The girls became ambassadors to our local schools in educating fellow students about bullying, and we approached Rosie to see if they would be interested in participating in a public service announcement, carrying the message to stand up to bullying. They were very interested, and in short, we shot the program and edited it and created a new PSA campaign. It is my sincere pleasure to announce that the Stand Up To Bullying Campaign was a 2014 WAVE Award finalist in the Public Service Announcement category. Congratulations. Now, if I could ask Deputy Director of Seabees Public Works, Luis Estvez, to come forward, and Dr. Tanya DeLion, the Assistant Principal of Maga Elementary School. Each year, our city, along with many other cities across the country, recognize a week in May as National Public Works Week. In 2013, the Seal Beach Public Works Department coordinated with the principal's office at Maga Elementary School and invited fifth grader classes to visit the public works yard on a field trip. The visit included many learning stations with public works community partners such as Orange County Water District, the Orange County Sanitation District, Orange County Waste and Recycling, just to name a few, along with the Public Works Department's huge equipment learning station, and the automobile learning station, and then contractors for the street sweeping and the pipe cleaning exhibits as well. And it was a really wonderful day of learning for the kids and the public works crews. The public works crews worked so well with the kids, and they were so patient, it was really a wonderful day. So I am very pleased to announce that the Maga School Field Trip to the Seal Beach Public Works Yard was a 2014 WAVE Award finalist in two categories. One is special audience for youth, and the other educational access. So congratulations. And now if I could ask Elizabeth Kane, Mark Lepasco, and Sophie here to come forward. We've covered the Rensselaer Beach Race for many years, but last year, as Rensselaer Beach Organization celebrated its 40th anniversary, we took the opportunity to try to cover the race in a way that we had been unable to do previously. It included documenting some of the work prior to the race day, along with efforts on race day. We, as well as the hundreds of volunteers who bring the race together that day, don't only see what's happening right where we're at, at the race, and so we wanted to see what the whole route looked like. So we needed a lot of help, so we got some from some golf cart owners in town like Laura Ellsworth, and motor officers, extra of our own dedicated volunteers, and lots of GoPros. We even had a 5K runner wear a head cam. So we were stunned at the footage. There are parts of Westminster Boulevard and Seabees Boulevard where it takes you a minute to realize what you're looking at, because all you see is a sea of people as far as you can see, and the landscape dips down, and it goes on forever. It's just, it was incredible. And so, it is my extreme pleasure to announce that our program, the 40th Anniversary of Rensselaer Beach Highlight Rail of 2014, was the WAVE Award winner in the sports coverage category. And so, on behalf of the Seabees Cable Communications Foundation and the public access producers, we sincerely thank you for your time to present these awards tonight, and for the opportunity to produce community programming. We will always strive to produce quality programming. Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next presentation is for National Public Safety Dispatcher Week, April 12th through 18th. Melissa Wintersoul and Joy Nasser are here to accept the proclamation. The week of April 12th through 18th is National Public Safety Dispatcher Week. The public safety dispatchers of West City's Police Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, protection of life and property, and ensuring the safety of the communities they serve. And each of our public safety dispatchers has exhibited professionalism, dedication, compassion, and caring during the performance of their job this past year.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I happen to be the city's representative to WestCom, and I can tell you, you will not be involved with a more professional, caring group of people, and true professionals. When you think about, they're the first link between public safety and people that need help, and they're professional, you can walk in anytime and you'll see them handling people in a very diplomatic way. They deliver babies, they've actually delivered babies, they've actually helped people with CPR, and I just couldn't be more proud of this group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Madam City Manager. I'm Steve Ditmarz, the interim dispatch administrator for West City's Police Communications. Unfortunately, Joy couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in for her. Along with me is dispatch manager Melissa Wintersoul. It gives me great pleasure to accept this recognition on behalf of the 25 employees of West City's Police Communications. As Mr. Sloan noted, they're a hardworking group of professionals, they put in a lot of long hours, sometimes under some extremely hard circumstances, and your recognition of them is greatly appreciated, because they work hard, but they appreciate it when people take note of the hard work that they do. So on behalf of them, I would like to thank you very much for this recognition, and if you need help, call 911.
Next recognition goes to Ryan Lowe, who has just earned his Eagle Scout Award. Ryan is in attendance to be recognized for achieving the high honor of Eagle Scout rank. He has believed in himself and worked hard to achieve this significant milestone. We commend you, Ryan, for your dedication and commitment, and thank you for leading our pledge tonight.
At this point, I'd just like to say thank you to the entire city of Seal Beach, to all the council members, and to the various representatives such as Marine Safety Chief Joe Bailey, and to the recreational department manager, Tim Cassie, who have both contributed greatly to my Eagle Scout project and have allowed me to complete my project here in the city of Seal Beach. I'm proud to have contributed something so great and so valued to the community, to such an amazing city, and I just want to, once again, thank you all for that opportunity that you presented me.
Madam Mayor, if I may, down here. Just for people in the audience, Brian's Eagle Scout project is a, is a big board down in front of lifeguard headquarters, and it describes the local fish and what's in the local waters, and he just, he did a magnificent job. It looks beautiful, it's very informative, and it was, it was just a great project that adds a lot to our city.
Great, thank you. The next recognition goes to the Orange County Fire Authority for Wildfire Awareness Week, which is May 3rd through 9th. Ken Cruz, Division Chief, is here to accept the proclamation. The week of May 3rd through 9th, 2015, is Wildfire Awareness Week. California is in a drought state of emergency, and Orange County's long, hot, dry months without adequate rainfall make our wildland areas vulnerable to severe wildfire conditions, and Orange County is currently experiencing low humidity and dry periods, which has made the brush extremely dry and flammable, creating ongoing dangerous fire conditions. So if Division Chief Cruz is here, I'm going to take it down.
Thank you, Mayor Deaton, Council, City Manager, City Staff, for this recognition. The mayor did a great job in summing up what we're going through with our drought, through numerous years of the drought and the dry weather, as well as our fuels. We're seeing fire behavior just off the charts from what we, what we've had in the past. I know down here in Seal Beach, you may not, may not have that, that problem as we face it down here, but it can be around as it's throughout the county. Last year, we had something in Long Beach here, in the wetlands, coming this way. So it's definitely, we don't think of it down in the beach community, but it's something that just with the weather itself that, you know, it gets into the homes and things, so we, we thank you for that, and as everyone would be diligent with fires, even though we're in the beach community, like I said, that just, we were aware of that, as people at Seal Beach go out, go camping, and go different things, that we're aware of the actual conditions that are out there. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Battalion Chief Tracy McClellan.
That's it, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, don't go anywhere, because your next one's for you too, okay?
Chief Cruz wasn't able to make it, so, I'm the next best thing. Get drummed up.
Okay, so the next one goes for drowning prevention awareness, and we're going to be giving you this recognition, and Battalion Chief Tracy McClellan is here to accept the proclamation. Memorial Day through Labor Day 2015 is drowning prevention awareness summer. Fatal and non-fatal drowning is a silent event occurring in as little as two inches of water. That's just phenomenal. Two inches of water, including swimming pools, spas, lakes, the ocean, and any body of water, and drowning is the leading cause of death and disability in California for children under the age of five. And in 2014, there were three fatal drownings and 28 non-fatal incidents in Orange County. Drowning is a major problem for adults 35 to 64, and as a result, there were 14 fatal drownings and six non-fatal incidents in 2014. California leads the nation in drownings, and last year, 21 children under the age of 15 died from drownings in California. Being a beach city, drowning is an important issue facing us every day. So I'm going to take this down.
All right.
We already have our pictures taken, then. All right. Thank you. You want to say any words about them?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Deaton and Council, once again. Yes, the drowning is, as we have the beach community here, we think of them in the pools, but as well, we have the open ocean, that there's definitely incidents as well that we have to be aware of. The staff that I had actually for what I thought was Orange County were actually considerably bigger, larger than what Mayor Deaton just read off, but we can recognize that it's a, it's a major problem. If we're swimming in the ocean, we just make sure that we swim with a buddy, we have somebody with us, so if we have a problem, we know if the lifeguards aren't there, or they're right there with you, that we have someone that can at least get help, as well as in a pool, in a community. We kind of use the ABCs, kind of like our ABCs of CPR, and once we're swimming, we have adult supervision, the barriers around our pool, and then everybody is knowing, knowing that we, that they know CPR, that if somebody's in need, that they can help out. So those are kind of the rules that we follow, and yeah, the numbers are... So those are kind of the rules that we follow, and yeah, the numbers are staggering, it's something that we can prevent, definitely prevent the drowning, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here. All right, now, before going to oral communications, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney, who has a few words he'd like to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to quickly report out of the closed session that the city council had earlier this evening. They were scheduled to discuss a not anticipated litigation. Direction was given to the city attorney regarding that matter, and the city council did authorize me to disclose that the subject of the closed session discussion was consideration of whether or not to initiate a challenge to the adequacy of the environmental document for the I-405 expansion project. No other reportable actions were taken, but I would also like to note that Councilmember Vera Papa did recuse himself from that discussion, due to avoid any appearance of a potential conflict of interest arising from his employment as a Caltrans employee. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions for the council.
Okay, any questions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead now and open oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Since we have a full house tonight, and some of you I have not seen here before, I want to make it very clear that the council will comment on anything that they would care to during their comment period, which will be immediately after oral communications. They cannot dialogue with you while you're at the mic, okay, just to be clear. And with that, we'll go ahead and begin. Carla.
Mayor Deaton and council members, I just want to say, on behalf of the golf tournament, which is May 4th, that we are sold out. And that's really good news. And Dave Scott from College Park East was one of the first. Thank you, David. I know this takes a little bit long time, David, you'll let me know, but I may not be here right after the tournament, I want to make sure that everybody gets some recognition. I want to thank the threesome, fivesome, the Watson Ohana, our team, Mr. Hill, Rikadri, Jesse Rodriguez, Fresh Cut Creative, Joe Joes, Workstation Industries, Sea Air Credit Union, B. Cubler, Main Street Realty, Jeff Hughes, Papadopoulos Family, Yucatan Grill, Peter and Lisa Mulvaney, Walt Warf, Feasto St. Germain, and Taya Main, Lennon John Pullman, State Farm Insurance, Brian McMahon, ABM Parking, Still Life Tattoo, Bamboo Grill and Sushi, Pet Your Risk Solutions, for being whole sponsors, which help us come out in the profit. And also, I want to thank the food sponsors, which these people are gonna have a good time, and of course, they really are. We have Original Fish Company, we have Hennessy's, we have Seal Beach Police Officers Association, sponsored with O'Malley's, Old Ranch Country Club, Patron Tequila, Backyard Mary's, so it'll be there for a while, so they'll be okay. At any rate, also, I want to thank the committee, of course, Mark Lapesco, Elizabeth Kane, Roger Killian, Manny Harrell, Barbara Collins, Advice from the Phillips, Patrick Iegos, Tina Knapp, Seth Aker, Dab Machin, and of course Sergeant Steve Rose, which I hold as a self-spart my heart for, because his father was my principal for many years, and I've known him for years. And he's been very helpful. And also, Tim Kelsey, who's terrific when we go into the office and hand off all our kinds of things, and I think I said Patrick Iegos. If I haven't mentioned somebody, please forgive me, and it will appear in another place. There are lots of great sponsors that will get, you know, the silver sponsors and so forth, will get recognition later. How am I doing, David?
You have about two minutes.
Okay. I wanted to say something about lifetime sports. My husband and I have lived in town for 52 years. I was a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for '24. We ran the roughwater swim. We really believe in lifetime sports. I can't say that golf, but I was 66-years-old. It is one of those lifetime sports. And as far as swimming, one of the unwritten laws in town, and I hope that the chief of Marine Safety will agree, and I think it's the same policy, no one in this town ever went without swimming lessons, no matter the cost. I think probably we're in a better situation now than we were 15, 20, 30 years ago, but no child ever suffered from not having swimming lessons in this town, because we really believe in the safety, and so therefore, we've had very few incidents in this town, and I want to applaud that. And another great lifetime sport, I want to applaud the 10K run, because it's also walking and running, and tennis, of course, is fantastic. So it's great to see everybody active, and thank you, everybody, for your support. Good evening, Council, Elizabeth Kane, Old Town, and representing Seal Beach. Seal Beach would really be remiss, and I would just like to take a moment to recognize truly that it's SBTV and Robin, Peter, Rob Roy, and the crew at SBTV. If you had never been a part of an organization that they film, you just don't know the hundreds and thousands of hours that they collectively, personally give to this community every single year, every single one of them, to document this community, from things at MAGA, to our race, to things at Leisure World, everything that they do. And this award really belongs to Robin. She spent nine months with us, literally chronicling everything from boring paperwork to porta potty delivery, to get a real sense of all of the things that went into the race, and she was there every single moment. But truly, SBTV and our cable communications group deserve a huge round of applause, and we should be thankful for them every day for what they do for this community. Second, I just want to put a pitch in that grant deadline is this Friday for Seal Beach for 2015, so if you think you're going to be applying for a grant, please get in. Thank you.
Good evening and greetings from Leisure World, I'm Ronnie Winckler, president of the Golden Rain Foundation. It was really thrilling to see the attendance from Mayor Deaton, our councilwoman, Martha Sandam, Martha Levitt, Mr. Sloan. Wow. We had over 2,500 people at our city Leisure World Chamber Expo, and our population and residents were thrilled with it. In fact, they want to do it every month, and we said, no, wait, we've got to think about this a little bit. But it was an ample opportunity to bring the services of the city and the businesses to the city back inside our walls, for people who often don't leave it, very often. So we'll have to see what we do with that in our future plans, but there will be more, maybe focused on very specific areas. Tomorrow, our 18-member board of directors will vote on two motions, which are crucial to the relationship between us, both of which I think will pass. One, of course, is the placement of the centennial bricks inside our wall. I think we finally got that all agreed on, a good place to put it, and that's going to be a go. The second one is the funding of a business license. Again, it takes forever for us to get anything done, but I do think that we'll get it funded, and we will have a farmers' market inside our walls. This may vary, seeing very small issues to the members of our audience and to you, but first, they're big things. This is the first time that we've ever started to get a real crack in our walls, so to speak. Those million-dollar walls, we're pretty, we hope, those crack very soon. I have another remark about the swimming. Probably we don't have too many problems with people over 65, because we don't like to give them bathing suits. Anyhow, I personally thank you. We still have a couple things regarding the bus schedules coming in, and a relationship with our Golden Age Foundation. Mrs. Levitt, I'm sure can get to the bottom of that one, but it needs a little work. But be patient with us, we are going to make changes. And for those of you that are not familiar with the inside of our one-square mile, we would be happy to take anybody, any one of you, any member of the city, on a tour, so that you can see just what we do and what we have available, it's quite a bit. And I also realized, when talking to someone tonight, that there's a big crowd here from College Park East regarding the 405 and the 22. This is interesting, because no one's talked to us about it, and we have one mile of our borders are on the freeway. So maybe somebody might think about getting some of the people from Leisure World involved. And enough said, and I thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Richard Winslow, and I live in Leisure World. I've given to the city clerk five copies of some papers, I'd ask her to pass those along. I'm here because I'd like the city to consider passing an ordinance allowing light electrical vehicles to use the bicycle path along the St. Gabriel River. The reasons for doing this are that light electric vehicles are, if you think of a motor scooter, they are a low-powered electric device, about three-quarters the size of what you might think of as a motor scooter. They're designed and defined by law as being electric with pedal assist, we can either pedal them, or run them on electricity, or a combination of the two when they're going uphill. They can only go 20 miles an hour at maximum speed. And without making any admissions, let me say that hypothetically, I can assure you that while riding my electric bike at first speed, I've been passed by bicyclists. The idea of allowing electric bikes on the bicycle paths, particularly the one along the St. Gabriel, is personally a matter of convenience for myself. It allows me to not have to drive down Second Avenue and deal with the busy traffic. Hypothetically, I would be able to use the bike way, before I learned that it was illegal. And the bike is small, it's about the size of a regular bicycle, although the tires are maybe 22 inches instead of 26. They have a horn, and a light, and mirrors. They make no noise, they have no pollution. And the state legislature has identified them and singled them out as a type of motorized However, the motorized bicycle state statute forbids their use on recreational bicycle paths unless they are adjacent to a roadway. So it's not legal to ride this on the bicycle path unless, according to the California Vehicle Code 21207.5, unless the local authority or governing body of a public agency having jurisdiction over such path or trail permits by ordinance such operation. Now, I'm not in bad shape, but I'm not about to ride two or three miles each way down to Seal Beach from Leisure World on a regular bicycle. My max is about a mile. I have a car, it's got a nice powerful V8 engine, I get about 22 miles per gallon with it. I would just as soon not take that down to the marina, because it contributes, it's expensive to operate. Local trips require a lot more maintenance than getting on the highway and driving at a highway speed. Contributes to traffic congestion, and of course, pollution, and it's fairly expensive in terms of gas. So instead of driving my V8 automobile down to my boat at Alameda's Bay, I like to hop on my electric bike and use that. But I don't want to drive along with all the heavy traffic on Westminster and Second.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Thank you. The light electric vehicles are not capable of doing anything that a regular bicycle can do, or can't do. I can't pass bicycles, they're powered by somebody in good physical shape. Really, all it does is allows somebody to put forth less effort to do the same thing as somebody in better physical shape can do without the electric boost. So what I'm asking you to do is consider taking advantage of a portion of the state statute to pass an ordinance allowing operation of light electric vehicles, electric bicycles on the bike path. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here to speak tonight?
Mayor Deaton, council members, good evening. My name is Les Stark, and I live in Old Town at 305 Central Avenue. I'm here tonight seeking guidance about how to appeal a recent decision by the city attorney. This decision just recently directed planning staff to stop work on my application for a conditional use permit that pertains to a remodel and addition to our home on Central Avenue. His direction to stop work was based on his conclusion that the Seal Beach Municipal Code does not authorize the planning commission to consider my application, and as a result, after working with planning staff for more than three months, I'm now back to square one, and I'm looking for some help from you. My wife and I are proposing to remodel and add a second story to our 998-square-foot single-family residence at 305 Central Avenue. When we designed this project, our first priority was to maintain the character of the neighborhood by retaining as much of the original home as possible, it's built in the 1940s. We have not reduced the size of the front yard, nor have we increased both sides of the first and second stories in the front of the home to the minimum setback requirements. Our hope is that the sacrifice of living space will make sure that our remodeled home fits in with the existing neighborhood and enhances its character and charm, it doesn't pursue anything like mansionization. Consistent with this objective, our plan proposes to retain our existing garage, that's been there since 1940s, we want to retain our existing garage at its current location, but add 170 square feet to its westerly side to provide for a line to room and storage area, as well as adding a second story. So in late 2014, the planning staff concluded that the proposed location of the garage does not comply with the development standards of the code. Specifically, the code requires that rear buildings in Old Town be located a minimum of the difference between 24 feet and the width of the alley. Well, my alley is 15 feet wide. So that means the minimum setback of a garage in the back has to be nine feet. Therefore, because the easterly corner of my garage is five feet from the alley's edge, planning staff concluded that our garage needs to be pushed four feet into the property. However, and this is a very important point, our alley lies diagonal to the property, one of only three such alleys in all of Old Town. This means that while moving my garage four feet in places the easterly corner of our garage nine feet from the alley, such a move places the westerly corner almost 16 feet from the alley's edge, okay? This is a significant and inequitable reduction of valuable and usable property on a size-challenged lot. And to make things even worse, planning staff calculated the distance for the required setback from the easterly corner of my garage, which is now five feet from the alley's edge. However, our plans for the garage do not call for a garage door to the easterly one-third of the rear garage structure. There's gonna be a wall there, not gonna park a car in there, okay? So we don't need to provide for a car to go in and out of that particular area, okay? So this raises the rhetorical question of why are we being forced to move our eastern corner of the garage by four feet into a property to accommodate a vehicle's turning radius, when cars won't be entering there? So we raise these concerns to planning staff, and I want to say they've been terrific. They're responsive, they're straight shooters, they want to help, it's fantastic. I give them high grades. However, they informed us that the interpretation of the code would not allow them to approve our proposed location, wouldn't do it. However, we were told that we could always challenge the planning staff's conclusions by filing an application for a conditional use permit with the planning commission, and based on this direction, we filed an application for a conditional use permit on January 30th of 2015.
You have one minute.
Almost three months ago. Almost three months ago. Then, in a meeting with planning staff on April 13th, I was told that the city's attorney had advised staff that the planning commission had no authority to consider my application for a CUP, and they directed planning staff to stop work on my application and refund my $1,294 application fee. So now, after several months, I'm back to square one. Frankly, I'm surprised and disappointed that the city's attorney is not allowing the members of the planning commission to consider my proposal. If they were allowed to do so, I believe that we can demonstrate that the location and design of our proposed garage structure meets the purpose and the intent of the code's development standards for rear garages in Old Town. Unfortunately, I'm not being given this opportunity. So I'm asking tonight for your help and direction. Can I appeal this decision by the city attorney? And how do I do this? Now, I did talk to planning commissioners last week, and they told us to work the staff. But I thought I would come here tonight and express my concerns. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. We'll try to get you some direction after the...
I'm sorry?
We'll try to get you some direction after the hearing tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Your Honorable Mayor Deaton and City Council, my name is Brad Luke, and I'm a 26-year veteran who clearly worked at the hospital in Long Beach, which is a great city to live in here in Seal Beach because it's so close to where I work. We've really enjoyed the nine months that we've been living here on Old Town, on Seal Way, right on the beach. But there's been a few things that's been a bit disturbing and frustrating with me for the past nine months we've lived here.
Could you please speak closer to the mic?
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear me a little better now?
Yes.
Sorry. Anyways, I have a few pictures here of some things that I'm a bit frustrated with.
Please do mention your name.
Brad Luke and Catherine Luke.
Thank you.
And I just have some pictures of some stuff that I took, pictures of things that were going on on the beach that were frustrating me, and I wanted to get into... share with you these pictures. Since we live right on the beach, and so we can pretty much see everything that's going on, I know that I believe that the beach closes at 10 o'clock at night, and many times at night, especially towards Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, there's a lot of noise going on on the beach, and I don't ever see any city policeman patrolling the area and people out on the beach. And I put up a wall, and then I'll yell out off a balcony, hey, can you guys get off the beach? It's closed at 10 o'clock. You know, and most of the time, once in a while, somebody says, yeah, and they leave. The rest of them just tell me, you know, give me the sign and tell me, hey, you know, get lost. And worse things. And the other thing is, I do the beach city cleanup all the time, and I surf every morning, well, not every morning, three to four days a week down on the north side of the pier. And all this dirt that they've been pushing, or the sand that they've been pushing into the thing that's riding the beach, and I know how much flooding has been affecting, I believe it's been affecting the cleanliness of the beach that I sort of find out on the north side of the pier. And a lot of times, they're doing this equipment early in the morning, as well as the sweeper. Early in the morning, I get up at 5:30, and these, the sweepers running up and down the beach at 6 o'clock in the morning. And there's, I'm sure I'm not the only one that gets up early, but there's a lot of people in this, that live on the beach that probably don't get up at 6 o'clock in the morning. So they have to listen. My wife is one of them, and she has sleep deprivation from that. And I even got out and asked the sweeper guy if he could sweep at a later time and talk to the guy that runs the sweeper thing to see if they could do that at a different time, and it still continues. The other last thing that I wanted to point out is that when I do the beach city cleanup, many times I'm picking up a lot of dog poop. And a lot of times, I see a lot of dogs on the beach, and then a lot of dog owners that aren't picking up their dog poop, plus they're eating on the beach as well, where a lot of us lay out and stuff. And it's very disturbing to me. And I also saw a dog that was on the beach right by a police cruiser, and the guy was on the beach talking to the police officer and stuff, and had his dog on the beach, and the dog peed right on the beach, right there by the police cruiser. So I'm not sure what all the rules are, but I believe on the signs directly in front of the palm tree that's out in front of my place, it says, "No dogs on the beach." That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Patty Campbell, College Park East. My comments this evening are on the final environmental impact report for the 405 project. Nowhere in the draft or the final EIR do they cover the impacts to College Park East. In my comments to them, I specifically asked, "Why not?" But they did not respond to the question. Their reply was, "Thank you for participating in the environmental process." Guess what? That's not an answer. My comments tonight will show you or point out some of the flaws in this document. Let me start with the sound wall. There's a picture in the briefing packet that, I don't know if you all have it tonight, but this is one that staff did. It shows you the wall, the proposed wall, okay? It does not show any curb or setback. It just shows where the wall will go. However, federal highway and Caltrans design standards call for a curb and a two-to-three-foot setback along a continuous wall for safety reasons, because you can't exit a vehicle on the right side in an emergency. The vehicle's right up against the wall. Also, there's no place for utility poles, signs, fire hydrants, et cetera. So this requirement for a setback and a curb would add an additional two and a half feet to three and a half feet. The current planner or setback is 48 inches, or four feet. This curb and setback will decrease the street anywhere from 33 to 35 feet. Now, does this additional amount further narrow the street, or is it going to move the wall back towards the freeway by that amount? We need to find this out. My bet is it's not going to come out of the freeway side. The city's minimum street width is 36 feet. Can the city tell Caltrans it must honor the city's code? Or can Caltrans override the city code? If the street width goes down to anywhere between 33 to 35 feet, then what? No parking at all so that we can still have two lanes? What do the people do on the weekends when parking on both sides of the street is very common, particularly by our city parks? What about soccer practices and the games at our city park? That picture that's being passed around shows you the parking by Blue Bell Park. Now, on utilities. In addition, without a setback, where will the telephone poles and any other utilities be placed? Those power lines should be undergrounded. If they are not, and there is no room on the south side of Almond, then they're going to go on the north side of Almond. And since they can't go on the sidewalk, they'll be placed in people's side yards. They said they wouldn't do that. But they also said they wouldn't move the sound wall. Now, I'm not going to discuss noise and air pollution unless I have time, because Shelley will probably do that. I want to talk about a mixing bowl situation. I call it that after a place in Arlington, Virginia, where two freeways, highways intersect, and everybody goes like this, okay? Now, traffic is going to be very dicey at the county line. Traffic exiting the toll lanes will merge to the right. Traffic from a general-purpose lanes that want to access the carpool will be merging to the left. Perhaps Caltrans would consider dropping the toll lane at Valley View, having all northbound lanes free from Valley View Northwood. That would give drivers more time and distance to reposition themselves for all the transitions at the county line. You're going to go up to 605, you're going to get up at 7th Street, you're going to go up to 405, you're going to take the carpool lane, you're going to take general-purpose lanes. A lot of decisions to make. And the way they're doing it, you probably have 20 feet to make that decision. However, since this is all about money, I'm not holding my breath on that one.
One minute.
But we can ask. Now, property values. In addition, we have also cited a decrease in property values because of the intrusions to College Park East. They said, "Caltrans was unable to find any literature, studies, or evidence that property values decrease because of freeway widening projects." That answer simply defies common sense. Back in the early 2000s, when Caltrans first proposed the recently completed connector project, there was a house at the end of one of the longer cul-de-sacs east of Almond Park that had been for sale and an offer accepted. When news of the possible impacts to the Almond wall were announced, the prospective buyers immediately rescinded their offer and instead came in with a new offer, $100,000 less. If that's not a decrease in property values, I don't know what is. This document is seriously flawed that needs to be challenged. Caltrans has either ignored or played down the impacts to College Park East. This is not acceptable. We will not be collateral damage for either the greater good or the ease of South County drivers, and we need your help. Thank you.
I don't even feel like I should speak after that. That made so much sense and so many good facts. My name is Janaye Lally, and I live in College Park East, Seal Beach. Most of us have gathered here tonight on behalf of the sound wall. We don't want it to move, and there's some good reasons why. Patty just pointed those things out. Further freeway expansion is ridiculous. You know as well as I do that Caltrans has already overbuilt in our corridor. They agreed to alternative one. I have the paperwork on that. I'm sure you got it and everybody else got it on their emails, when they decided to go with alternative one. And it says that today, we have selected alternative one as locally preferred. Alternative one will add one general-purpose lane in each direction of the I-405 freeway from Euclid Street to the 605 interchange. That's what they told us we had. We fought this before. They came to the understanding that it was wisdom to do that and therefore would not touch our sound wall. Recently, at one of the meetings, Caltrans mentioned that they were concerned with the accidents down in this area. Well, since they have done the things that they have done already, it is worse. It is more dangerous. Now try and cross all of those lanes to get off on Seal Beach Boulevard in either direction that you're coming from. The speed is ridiculous. It's very dangerous. And the thought of adding more lanes or toll roads, I can't even understand it. You know, it's a strange analogy, but it's a simple analogy. It's like that of a rebellious child. They'll only get away with what you let them get away with. Okay? We ask you to file a sequoia challenge. We ask you to file this on our behalf. This must stop. The overbuilding is craziness. It has already diminished our quality of life. The noise that we have is even more now, and I can't even comprehend it being greater. Patty mentioned the air quality and the report on that, and it's inconclusive. They didn't even, they didn't even come up with any facts of how, or estimations of how it would affect us as residents. Please support us. You're in that position, or you can do that for us. And I have a positive thing to this. Just think, in the history of Seal Beach, you, Mayor Deaton, and the council will be thought of as protectors against the overbuilding, and you will be seen as protectors to the residents of Seal Beach. Please, I beg of you, I'm not too prideful to beg, please consider a sequoia challenge and a lawsuit to defend us. Thank you.
I'm passing out a flyer that I apologize for. It's kind of a scan of a scan of something I made a year or so ago. And it's a diagram of what's going to happen at the county line. The document, you know, as far as air quality, as far as traffic, everything is hunky-dory. Everything is fine. Those of us who live up here may have a better appreciation, and this just sort of indicates how traffic is going to go. The green line, I apologize, it's probably hard to read. The inside of the freeway, the green line, is going to be the two express lanes coming through. There's, first of all, it shows the brown line with traffic going off to 7th Street. Then it shows a connector going off to the 605, and then the 605 main lane going off as the traffic peels off. My estimate is that 75% of the traffic or more that's headed north on the 405 continues on the 405. There's a little bit goes on the 605 and a little bit on 7th Street. They have, in the final EIR, in the EIR document, they have the express lanes, which because OCTA knows that 3+ is very difficult. They know that. An OCTA focus study told them that. They've also done, SCAG has done a toll, sorry. They've done a study on HOV lanes that says 3+ is difficult. There's a minority of people in there. Most of this lane is going to be single-occupant drivers along with exempt vehicles and buses and things. And those people are going to have to exit, as Patty said, they're going to have to exit the toll lanes. So they're giving them use of a second lane for a little while there to exit so they can spread out. That's good for safety's sake. Anyway, they say that this is the worst-case scenario, but as we have found, just about everything that's in the final EIR is what's going to happen. And honestly, if they restricted that to one lane, they're only, they're going to have a backup of the express lane, and that's not going to prove throughput. So this is what we're going to have. We're going to have the bulk of the traffic squeezing down primarily into three lanes during the peak periods because the other cars are going to be moving faster, and they're going to be moving slower. So regardless, you're going to have slowing here. You can see you're going to have slowing. Slower vehicles do cause pollution. They just, the EIR just says rapidly-moving vehicles don't cause pollution, and so you have no problem. It also says that there's going to be induced demand, that if you expand the freeway, it's going to induce people to come on the freeway. No one's going to get on the freeway into that mess. It's more likely cars will get off the freeway onto our city streets, and that will affect all of Seal Beach. It will affect Leisure World. It'll put cars on Seal Beach Boulevard. We also have people in Garden Grove that are going to say, "I'm not going to do this. I'm going to take Lamson. I'm going to go around." People in Huntington Beach that say, "I'm not going to do this. I'm going to take PCH." People on PCH, on Westminster, Seal Beach Boulevard, this is going to affect our ability to get around. It's going to affect our businesses, employees being able to get to work, our customers being able to get to our businesses. It's going to create air pollution for us, traffic, noise, and it's going to affect the quality of life of all of Seal Beach. I ask you, please, consider a sequoia challenge. Please help us. Help us because it is going to cause a big effect on Seal Beach. Thank you.
Just for a second, I'm down Seal Beach. And as far as this 20 mile an hour electric bicycle, wouldn't you have to get a coastal commission approval, just as you should have gotten a coastal commission approval for the dirt that you're bringing in?
It is dirt. You're correct.
It's dirt. So I called the coastal commission, and I'm going down to look through the So I called the coastal commission, and I'm going down to look through the file. I don't believe any of you have been down there to look to see what's happening to our beach. It's now about a cliff, and when the waves come over, it comes right down to Seal Way. It doesn't dry, and it's got a white residue. And they had the city come out there so fast and clean it up. So what's in that residue? Where did that dirt come from? I know you have run some kind of report on it, but when I looked at it, there are things in there. So I did call the coastal commission and tell them about it. I have taken pictures. I will take them down to where I go to look through the file. And how are you going to get that dirt out of there? It's now going across to the other side. We're having all these regionally lifeguards come down. What if they get sucked from that white residue? What is it? Do you know what it is, Joe? It's out there on Seal Way. And so one of the owners came out and told me, "It's been like that ever since the water came down. The dirt will not dry." And we've got the beach so that if one wave comes over, it can't go back. It comes right down Seal Way. So we'll go answer. But also, I want to talk about transparency in government, starting with the city manager, Jill. Her right to resign. And why was the previous city clerk told not to show up to her last meeting meeting? Why was she told not to show up? And where is her certificate of appreciation? Why wasn't she given one? She was elected. She used some of her own money to upgrade the system, the software system, and then she was told not to come back for the last meeting. Do you know why? Does anybody know why? She needs, she deserves just as much appreciation as everybody else. Nobody wants to give an answer. That's why we have to keep on. Nobody wants to give an answer. So I've been now talking to people about the dear neighbor brochure. It was so close to the election that a lot of people threw it away. I threw a lot of mine away. They threw it away. So if you don't want to give us any answers about all the money that was spent, $68,000, then we're going to have to do something else, because the papers won't report it. And also, I still want to know why we weren't told about election nine to nine five. So California code, that if you're going to do something like this, then we have a right to know in advance about it. And we weren't given any advance, because one minute. The minute that you sent out the first one, you started canceling all the council meetings. And that isn't right. So I'm still asking about the election code. Where does that stand? We deserve more than a blank answer from the city manager, which I still think she needs to resign. And we will keep it up until we have to, we have to sit out on the street and hand out brochures. We'll do something. But very important is our kids that are going on into that water. Somebody needs to tell us what that white residue was. You've got to know what it is. Or at the end of the day, I will call them. Thank you.
My name is Chair Ye. I live in College Park East. I see tonight there are big attendee is against the widening of 405, the project. And I didn't get a chance to read the EIS, Environmental Impact Statements. The normal environmental impact statement should have one version is keep existing condition as it is. I heard Caltrans has come up with many different combinations to improve the freeway by adding additional lanes to induce the traffic to come in. So far, they have built the on-ramp to 22 with two-speed lane and also two-lane to 605. And that is done, has done enough damage already, because the on-ramp people from Seal Beach Boulevard try to get on 405, you can't get on, because those speeds are so fast, because of the widening. Furthermore, they are talking about adding additional lanes in the back. That should keep the way it is without any addition. That's a transition stage from Valley View to Seal Beach Boulevard. You narrow down the traffic, because further down in Los Angeles County, the speed lane is only one lane. Whatever lane you have, you cannot force into. So if we are, city council member, if you are taking the issue with them, please question them the EIS to address that, because that would, if it's true environmentalist, he would be stating, you know, additional lanes can cause so much danger. Safety is the biggest issue to all Orange County people coming out from that on-ramp. Thank you.
My name is Tom Power. I live in College Park East since December 1983. And I just thought we, maybe everyone here should go through a little review of, two years ago, we had, when we first heard about this, we had a meeting up in the tennis courts at Old Ranch. We must say 300 people there. I have never seen anything like it. I mean, it was, we were very, very concerned that we were together. There was a long discussion that evening. Pretty much everyone wanted nothing changed, but we all agreed, Measure M, there had to be improvements on the freeway. And 100% of the people together said one free lane in each direction. And that's a key word, free lane. Because Measure M never once, never in that whole thing that we voted on, 68%, I believe, because it had to be over two-thirds, 68% of the people wanted improvement on the freeways, never toll lanes. And I'm not legal-beagle, but I don't know, it would seem legal action should be taken, because I feel that voters were duped into this, and I don't think 68% of the people in Orange County would have voted for this, if they knew that. So other than that, I'm, you'd probably like me like, because I'm not going five minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Cohen. My husband Manny and I have lived in College Park East since 1980. And we are not directly affected by the sound wall. We live in Melville Track. However, we are one community. Seal Beach is one community. And we urge you to stand with those in Seal Beach, with those in College Park East, to stop Caltrans from doing this. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Robert Gonzalez, and we're going to beat this horse, because I have five minutes. Two years ago, the residents of Seal Beach received a letter from representatives of OCTA that stated that during the 405 expansion project, the sound wall that runs adjacent to a relatively narrow road, that is a sole route out of College Park East neighborhood, would be left untouched. The most recent final environmental impact report that came out stated that that wall would in fact come down. Several issues that are raised because of this. First, safety issues. It hasn't come up today, but it will come up, I'm sure, at the next meeting where we get together and have this same little pow-wow. We live in an area that has a number of seniors in our community, and if you have to get an emergency vehicle down a very narrow road, I'm concerned about what that means for some people that really need that help. In the last year, we've had two different residents on our very small cul-de-sac that had to have emergency vehicles come down on Almond Wall to our very small cul-de-sac. Number two, safety concerns. We're getting the fact that the roads will receive additional traffic flow. That's going to be unsafe for the kids that have to walk to a bus stop. If you think that people are in a hurry in the morning, as it is now, just trying to get to the freeway, think what that's going to do when you cut off hundreds of homes from the normal access to get to the freeway and they have to take alternate routes. It's going to be a huge mess. Huge inconveniences caused by construction area, noise pollution. And then finally, while it might be tempting for some of our neighbors to say, you know, "It doesn't really impact us. I'm not going to be directly affected by this." The fact is that when, if this goes much further, you're going to see a massive amount of homes that are put up for market. And when you see that many homes put on the market, that's going to affect the value of every home in Seal Beach. Whether or not you live 20 feet from that sound wall, or if you live four miles from that sound wall, it will impact every home in Seal Beach. Thank you, and I'll see you for the next one for my five minutes. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, could, we ask you to come line up, so we can get through this section of the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Steven Orr. I'm a resident of College Park East since 1986. And I have serious doubts about the wisdom of the Caltrans approach, and I strongly urge the Seal Beach City Council to file an objection to the environmental impact report. The idea of adding lanes on the Orange County side and not also adding lanes on the Los Angeles side just means a huge, massive bottleneck will be created, precisely at the location of a major congested freeway interchange. Why would you want to add a bottleneck on top of an already congested interchange? This means that people will be exiting the freeway in droves to try to get away from it, taking Lamson, taking Westminster, Valley View, Seal Beach Boulevard, the people who may need emergency assistance. Well, those ambulances are going to be having to deal with increased traffic. So I think this is a major quality of life hit for all the residents of Seal Beach, and again, I urge you to file an objection. Thank you very much.
Let's line up if there's anyone else that wishes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Dave Scott. I live in College Park East. I've lived there for 47 years, since 1968. I've seen a lot of changes. I was there when they built the original sound wall, which was in 1977, and that was a mess while that was going on, as we had messes during the last two or three years when they were, maybe five years, while we were doing the reconstruction of the 405 and the 605 and 22 and the overpasses. To me, it seems ridiculous for them to want to add additional lanes to that part of the freeway where it's going to bottleneck at the Los Angeles County line where it goes down to four lanes. And we've got about eight lanes now in each direction. I liken it to the area down by South Coast Plaza, where they probably have more than eight lanes at one point where the toll road comes in from Orange County and merges. And if you ever drive down that area about 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock in the afternoon, no matter how many lanes they have, the congestion is always there, including the carpool lanes. And then it kind of bottlenecks, and by the time you get to about Magnolia, when the lanes settle down, the traffic starts to move again. Then when it gets back up to the 22 and the 405 merge, you have the same problem. And adding two more lanes is going to not alleviate the problem at all. I don't see how it is, especially when you get to Orange County or Los Angeles County and you bottleneck everything down to two lanes or four lanes again. Another thing, someone else had mentioned this, when you're on the carpool lanes, if you're coming up to 405 and you try to get off the carpool lane after you get to where the 22 merges, to try to get off even at Seal Beach Boulevard, which is about two miles, is a real chore right now, let alone if they have more lanes in that area. It's a bottleneck if you're coming down the other way, down the 605 in the carpool lane, and you try to get off. It's impossible to get off at Seal Beach Boulevard, and it's a real chore to get off that's Valley View even. So adding more lanes is not going to solve the problem. It's going to exasperate the problem and make it worse. And I don't have the EIR reports or anything like that with me, but I know from living here for 47 years, what a problem that's going to be for all of us, and what an inconvenience it's going to be, after what we went through the last five years. That's all I have to say.
Hi, Mayor Deaton, and council members and community members. I just wanted to say that after the meeting on Thursday, I was able to speak with David Richardson from Caltrans.
Could you state your name?
Laurie Donovan, from College Park East. And I was able to speak with David Richardson after the meeting on Thursday. And some of the answers that we had to our questions, I just wanted to put it out there for information. He said that basically we're forward-looking into doing this big expansion, because in the maybe 30, 40 years, Long Beach will join us, and we want to have ours completed for the freeway expansions. He also said that earning the money on those hot lanes would come from people who are desperate, say maybe your child broke their leg or something, and you're going to pay that extra money to get to your child in a hurry. He also mentioned that, that, where are those three points? Kind of nervous here, but those three, that Long Beach will join us in about 30 or 40 years, they'll make money by those of us that are desperate to pay those tolls to get to our children if we have an emergency. Or also that he asked to look at the greater good, that there's accidents that happen that will cause liability for Caltrans, and he wants to make sure that he doesn't do anything that would deviate from the plan that they have right now, because he doesn't want to be responsible, and that we're just this little community where there's only 5,000 cars that go through our neighborhood versus 700,000 cars that go through the freeway. And I just kind of felt like there's a bigger plan here, a bigger picture, that we're not really a parent, a part of, and that we're just going to get, we just don't have any hope. So I'm just hoping that with our city attorney, that he will file what needs to be done to take a better look at this. Appreciate your time.
Good evening. My name is Damon Lanier, and I'm a resident of Seal Beach and College Park East. First of all, thank you, everyone in the audience, for donating your time and for donating your time in public service. I think it's quite clear that Caltrans and their many representatives don't really care what I or anyone else has to say. They've made that abundantly clear on an abundant number of occasions. I think that they've got money in their pocket burning a hole, and the government philosophy of use it or lose it, I think, is what's in play here. They've got millions of dollars that they feel that they must spend, and they want to spend as much of it as possible. Otherwise, they're going to lose that money. One thing I don't think that's really been considered is the acres and acres of land that the Naval Weapons Station has on the south side of the freeway, that eight feet we're talking about. They're growing cabbage crops there, and I've heard the excuse that there's a blast zone radius, so they're going to allow people wearing jeans and t-shirts into the cabbage crops to harvest, but yet they're concerned about a blast radius of a bunker there that might affect the freeway. Well, none of the answers have been making any sense to me. I don't know why the governor or anyone hasn't asked the federal government to access some of that land there. And then the sound wall will be a moot point, because there's acres of land on the south side. side of the 405 that if the Naval Weapons Station would just give up 10 feet, then they could just plant two less rows of cabbage next season, and then that way, you know, problem solved. I don't know why anyone hasn't really thought about doing that. Very few people in this room will be impacted more than myself as a result of this freeway widening project. I live at Almond and Oleander. That's ground zero for where this is going to happen. That's, I don't know how tall that sound wall is. God, it's got to be 40 or 50 feet. I don't know. The cost, the demolition cost alone of removing it, and then the rebuild cost, can you imagine how big that footing is going to have to be because it's got to, it's got to be, what, the wind variance or whatever, you know, it's got to be millions of dollars in demolition and rebuild costs alone. If Caltrans can, you know, gave just this much about spending our money, they would consider, hey, we can save $10 million in this project by just leaving the sound wall in place, you know? And I don't think anybody in this room wants to pay to drive on the freeway. I think we pay enough in taxes as it is right now. I don't think anybody really wants to pay more money just to drive on the freeway that our tax dollars have already gone to pay for. So I, I know that this is, you know, kind of a moot point when we're talking about this. And the worst case scenario, say that all of our efforts fail, I would ask you to just do one thing. If they do have to tear the sound wall down, somehow make them build a new sound wall before they do any construction because, because freeway construction is going to take years. And I'm going to be at ground zero for probably four or five, six years. You all saw how long it took just to build one bridge over the freeway. Can you imagine how many years it's going to take for this construction project and for there to be no sound wall this entire time during it? It's going to be a nightmare, a safety nightmare, a public safety nightmare, you know, whatever nightmare you want to call it, that's going to be it. I mean, so if we could just convince them to erect a new sound wall before they do any construction whatsoever with the, with the freeway, that would at least make a horrible situation just a little bit better. So I would urge you to, you know, if at least we can get that much out of them, because it's quite clear that they've ignored hundreds and hundreds of residents' requests for, for, you know, consideration. Uh, my, my time's up. Good night, everybody.
My name is David Didier. We own a home in College Park East, like almost everybody outside here. We are your constituents. You are led to us to stand up and fight for us. Period. Thank you.
My name's Mimi Canizaro. I also live in College Park East. And I want to focus on the wall. There's been a lot of talk about the lanes and the traffic and the accidents, and I completely agree. But we're fighting Caltrans, right? Huge. If we can focus on not moving that wall, that will help us tremendously. My, my big issue is safety. If you've ever spent any time in College Park East at any hour of any day, you will see oodles of pedestrians and cyclists going around our loop. It's constant. And if we take that, if that wall comes down, the time that that's down is terrifying. I just can't imagine the accidents that could possibly happen. If the wall goes back up, we lose the street, we lose parking. You've got bicyclists and pedestrians sharing that space with parked cars, emergency vehicles, et cetera. It's very scary. We could talk about the pollution during construction, after construction, once the traffic comes that much closer to our homes. And obviously, home values, property taxes, et cetera. So there are so many reasons if you could support us in not moving that wall. Thank you.
My name is Art Lawley. I live in College Park East, and I'm here to ask you as a city council to request that we do not, a secret challenge. It was mentioned, put up another wall before they take the current one down. We can beat this. With your support, if we challenge Caltrans, we can beat this sound wall being torn down. They originally told us that they were going to do it without touching the sound wall. And then they said they were going to take two feet. And then they said they were going to take six feet. Now it's 10 feet, add another three feet for a parkway, you're halfway into the street, and that's ridiculous. It is a safety issue. It absolutely is. The EIR is absolutely inconclusive. They didn't even take into consideration the health of the residents in College Park East. It's kind of like Northern California, they're all concerned about that Delta smelt. How about the water coming down here? But I get sidetracked. It's all about the people that live here in Seal Beach. We are your constituents, as the gentleman said here a moment ago. And we plead with you to approve moving forward with a secret challenge so we can stop that There's already inadequate parking. I'm going to duplicate some of the statements that have been made already tonight, but there's already substandard parking. Last Saturday, they had an event at the Old Ranch Country Club, and there were cars parked all the way down Basswood, down Astor, down Almond. They were around Blue Bell Park on Blue Bell because there was overflow parking for an event that was there. What's going to happen if they narrow down that street? It, it just doesn't make sense. Measure M, we approved one lane in each direction. And I attended the OTTA meeting in, I think, the city of Orange a couple of weeks ago. One of the OTTA board members even mentioned that there's a shortfall in the projection of funds that will be available, I think it was about 31%, something like that. So they don't have the funds. And if, most of these funds, I think, are federal funds, if that's the case, taking a couple of feet, like the gentleman said a few, a couple comments ago, it's federal land on the south side of the freeway. Let's take, um, take the three feet from there. Like you said, a couple of feet of cabbage? Come on. The bottleneck that will be created, taking it from here down to here, it's, it's just unacceptable. Um, and it's, it's not, this, it's unsafe. Absolutely unsafe. If we give them an inch, they're going to take a mile. They started, they got our approval for one lane in each direction, and now they want HOV hot lanes, two hot lanes in each direction, plus a general purpose lane in each direction. It just doesn't make sense. And they're going to, and so we've got to stop them from taking down the sound wall. Now, um, I don't know if any others stepped up to get in line to talk, but I think, thank you, by the way, for all those who did speak, but I think there are many here to support a secret challenge, so our ultimate goal is to keep that sound wall intact. So what I'd like to do is ask everybody that supports a secret challenge and has not had, had, or will not take an opportunity to speak tonight, please stand so you can be recognized. Thank you.
Seeing no one else here to speak, I close oral communicate. Oh, now, come on, I asked you to get in line. Be fair. Okay, is there anybody else to follow him? Okay.
All these ladies, sweet. My name is Michael Burden. Uh, my wife and I have lived in College Park East since 1994 and raised our son, who's also an Eagle Scout, uh, from the city of Seal Beach. And, um, the concerns we have in the neighborhood, everybody has spoke about it, and unfortunately, the age of our neighborhood, these people have put their lives, blood, sweat, and tears into these homes and have raised equity in the homes. And the point we've taken on the demise of equity in the homes that we have seen, and fortunately, um, it's gone through that, that stage. The secret events that we've talked about and pre-represented, we wish you would consider that, but it was called to my attention that Mr. Verapapeh has, you know, resigned himself from comments of this because he's apparently with Caltrans. And it was the governing board of our city had a disadvantage when we have one of our representatives work for an agency that we're all in disagreement with. So I did take that into consideration. I know the family members that we talked about, we have some new residents in our area that have just moved in and live three feet from the sound wall. We understand the sound wall could or could not be moved. The addition of the lanes that we're talking about, my wife has asthma, uh, we have enough pollution already, and we're farther down in our cul-de-sac. And with the addition of these lanes and the amount of pollution that comes over the wall, I don't know how high we build that wall. We'll have to deal with that. So we just, please consider taking care of our population that you represent us, your representatives, and we'd appreciate you trying to help us put a stop to this. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comments now. Thank you all for coming. That is the way that your government works. It's good to hear from you. Thank you for coming out. Uh, the first thing I would like to say is that every single person on this council takes your, uh, your issues very seriously. Many of them share your concern, even though it may not be the Almond Wall, it is certainly the pollution, the congestion, and all of the other things that affect all of us. As far as you being Seal Beach residents, I got your message loud and clear. Yes, you are Seal Beach residents. I personally have gone down three times to speak at both OCTA and Caltrans on your behalf. And, um, some might call it even ranting sometimes.
You did a good job.
Thank you. Um, I do want you to know that while we may not all agree on what the most effective way to maintain our community is, we are all working really hard to do that. So, uh, tonight, uh, I'm going to give each of the council members a chance to speak, but I did want to make it very clear that all five of us up here, all five, want to protect College Park East. So with that, I would like to ask the city manager for her comments.
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Miller.
Yeah, I have some, I guess I would say, bad news from the OCTA meeting today. The board voted to proceed with alternative three. It was a vote of 12 to four. I voted against it. Our supervisor, Michelle Steele, voted against it. Supervisor District Number One, Andrew Doe, voted against it. Huntington Beach Mayor Pro Tem Jim Catapultis voted against it. Tom Tate called in that he would have voted if he had not been there. Anyway, they're going to proceed with alternative, um, three. I guess if you want to complain, the best place to complain is to write to Governor. That's the only place I can tell you to complain about that at this point. With regard to continuous access and additional access, the, they had an ad hoc group that was working on a number of factors related to this decision today. No, we're unable to get any more continuous access or additional access, although they say they're going to look at that over the next couple of years and if technology allows it. I think it's less probable because it causes more financial problems. They want to get the people on, they don't want people jumping in and out of the toll lanes. So I wouldn't hold my breath on that, but I hope that we do have continuous access. Also, the HOV 2+, which is the carpool of today, the two-person carpool of today, they have a statement in there that they'll try to get no less than three years of free access for those two-person carpools. And that's subject to a traffic and revenue study that they're going to do over the next nine months. At that point, they're going to try to establish how much, uh, free, how long the HOV 2+ will be free. And also depends if they find additional financing from some agency somewhere. Anyway, the other thing that was kind of of interest was that they didn't define the corridor. In the past, we defined the corridor as from where they started the toll lane to up to the 605 freeway. And the reason we did that was because we felt we needed the revenue. We, the people that represent this area, felt we need the revenue to maintain our roads. As mentioned here, the freeway will be congested, people will be on the side streets, and our side streets will be impacted. Unfortunately, at this point in time, they're not going to define what the corridor is, and I suggested today that what they really mean is anywhere in Orange County. Now, the one thing the ad hoc group did do, and I think they did well at this, all the, all the excess, or well, I guess I'd say the net revenue from the toll lanes will stay in Orange County. So that was a positive. Caltrans won't take it off and take it to other areas in California. But with that, I just wanted you to know that right now the toll lanes are proceeding, and, uh, there'll be things going on for the next couple of years before they start construction. I think constructions, um, I'm not sure, probably 2018 or 19, I'm not sure at this time, but there's a number of contracts that are going to start up. This, this traffic and revenue study will be important for all of us that want to see that carpool lanes remain free, and we won't know about that for the next nine months to a year. I know I didn't give you good news, but, uh, we're still working on all this. As the city attorney said today, we're all still looking at all this, and, uh, I, I personally am going to fight for the sound wall till the day they tear it down. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Martha Abbott.
I'd like you to know that I too support the keeping of the, of the Almond Wall. I understand fully the noise impact and the air pollution impacts that you're experiencing because we are experiencing it as well on the other side of the freeway in Leisure World. And, um, I'm not quite sure how we can get some more mitigation out of them for the Leisure World side of it, but I fully support your issues, um, with Caltrans and OCTA. And I'd like to just, um, reiterate how wonderful it was to have an expo at Leisure World over the weekend. The Chamber of Commerce and the staff at Leisure World did a magnificent job. And as the President Ron DeWingler said earlier, there were 2,500 people there, easily 2,500 people of our residents, um, were there. I know none of you can relate to any of that because you're not in, in Leisure World unless you have someone there, uh, that lives there. But it was a really good Saturday morning. And I'd like to remind people that the coyotes are out again. It's time. And, um, to those of us in Leisure World, we have a big, we will have a big problem. I know that in College Park West, they're already having a big problem. Remember the hazing? Remember that. You must haze if you are so against trapping coyotes. You have to get with it and start hazing these coyotes because they're not going to leave unless you do. Or somebody's going to come along and kill them. So if you object to that, then get out there and learn how to haze and do it right. And that's all I have to say.
Mayor Pro Tem Sloan.
Yes, I just want all of you to know that I share your concerns about the sound wall. I really believe that it should stay and that, uh, we should do whatever it takes to keep it there. I would also like to add that I heard several comments about where we're at Seal Beach also, where you know there's a little pocket of homes over on the other side of the freeway called College Park West, and we feel that we're part of Seal Beach also.
And may I say, you are. And Councilman Verapapeh?
Um, I just want to commend Councilman Miller. He's doing an admirable job on the OCTA board. It's a very difficult position. As you can see, was, um, voted 12 to four against the co-op agreement with Caltrans. It's a very difficult, uh, position to be in. He's doing a great job for the city of Seal Beach. I just wanted to commend him for that, um, task. Also, um, I too went to the Leisure World Expo. It was a wonderful expo. Thank you for the invite. I got reunited with some previous past residents, neighbors that I had in Seal Beach. It was nice to see them back, you know, in Leisure World. Also, the car show, no one mentioned the car show last weekend. Uh, the city did a great job. The police department, the city staff, emergency response team, the chamber, and the countless volunteers is a wonderful event. Good job. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I would like to take the opportunity I would like to take the opportunity to address a few things that came up tonight, um, in addition to the, uh, sound wall. Um, sir, could I ask you to take the name of the city manager, Jill Ingram? She's going to be looking into the, um, your situation personally? Yes, I didn't, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Stark. So if you will call, um, City Hall in the morning and ask for, uh, Jill Ingram, she will be, uh, working with you on that. Okay? And then, um, I want to address the fact that it was brought up, that Linda Devine was not given an award. I personally asked her to accept award, I personally asked her to have a party, I personally asked her to give her an award. She did not want one, she declined it, she declined a party, and I do not know where that information came from, because that's not true. The other thing is...
Could I, could I only ask to add to that, Mayor? I also asked her, and she declined.
Okay, thank you very much. The other thing that I would like is, I would like, with the city manager's approval, to ask Mr. Crumbie to address the sand issue and the testing that it has gone through, and the fact that it may be dark colored, but it is not dirt.
Good evening, I'm American Council. Uh, the sand that's being brought to Seal Beach is originating from the riverbed of the San Ana River. Now traditionally, that was the source of sand that nourished all of, uh, Orange County beaches and, and the coastline, um, for California as well. Um, that sand, uh, before it was brought here, went through extensive testing to make sure that it, it, um, was beach compatible in a variety of areas. Number one, chemical composition, uh, it was tested to make sure that it matches, also grain size analysis, it was run through and, uh, made sure that, um, um, it is appropriate for our beach. And third, um, there was test, extensive testing done to ensure that it's free of contaminants to be placed on our beach. Uh, all of the testing that was done was presented to all of the regulatory agencies that oversee, um, the city's management of the beach.
Could you name some of them?
Well, um, first and foremost, um, the Evanna Protection Agency, the US EPA, um, was provided with the information, they reviewed it, and they approved the placement of the sand on our beach. But subsequent to that, the California Coastal Commission, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Region Water Quality Control Board were also consulted with that process. So, um, there was extensive testing done, and, um, and a lot of work that goes into, um, the sand before it's placed onto the beach.
Okay. Thank you. I, I do want you to know that the sand that we are taking is sand that would have ended up on the beach anyway. It came out of the river, which was on its way to the beach. All right. Finally, I would like to, um, say that the Leisure World event was, um, done by the Chamber of Commerce, the, uh, Leisure World, um, is it Golden Rain that did it? I don't know, I don't want to give it credit to the wrong place. Golden Rain, and, uh, the city of Seal Beach, and it was a great triumvirate, it ended up in a wonderful day, was a lot of fun, I, uh, they had out a lot of really cool, um, freebies too, I might say, the sunglass visor holder thing was really neat. And then, um, also the car show. I thought the car show was one of the best that I'd ever seen. Unfortunately, it rained. I want you to know, I got to do the mayor's pick, and I picked a nineteen forty-six, uh, Woody with, uh, real wood surfboards and a couple of real, um, uh, skis put on the side. Very, very cool car. I might also say that it was all done in SC colors. So with that, we will move on. All right. Um, we have no council, um, items at this time. We are going to move on to the consent calendar. I believe we have two people who would like to make a statement. Councilman Verapapeh?
Yes, I'd like to have a record that I have a revote for item G, please.
And Councilman Noah?
I would also like to record reflect on voting against item G.
All right, may I have a motion? Mayor Fekud, I'm sorry. Um, also let the record reflect on, uh, agenda item A, which is the minutes from the April thirteenth council meeting, that you have a revision to those minutes on the day as for your approval tonight. Okay, fine. Um, if everybody could just wait one second, we're almost done, okay? When then, um, we're finished. Okay, so do I have, uh, a motion to accept it? So move. Second. Okay, please vote.
I would...
Okay, that's five zero to accept the consent calendar as presented with two no's on item G. Uh, there are no items removed from the consent calendar, no public hearing, no unfinished, uh, business, so I now adjourn the city council to Monday, May eleventh at five thirty PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Again, I want to say thank you to everyone who comes. When you come, it helps us do our job better, so thank you. Good night.
Enjoy your daily love life, and every daily you'll find a lot of things to bring you joy and get peace of mind. Every father getting screwed, and everybody...